Ladies and gentlemen, if I can have your attention. Welcome to Orange Town Town Hall. I'm Scott Vanderhoff. I used to be a politician. And tonight, I serve as your moderator for both debates. The first debate between for the council, for the board seat. We intend to have it run about 45 minutes, after which we'll have the debate for the supervisor's office, which would run about 45 minutes as well. We're joined tonight as moderators to help by Kate Raffa, who is also with Our Town, our favorite newspaper.
Thank you very much, Scott.
You're welcome. That'll be $10 at the end. And Dr. Bob Shaline, who is from St. Thomas Aquinas College. And before I introduce the candidates, let me give you the rules, some of which you've learned already. We're going to start with, excuse me, we're going to start with opening comments by each candidate for two minutes. At the close, we'll have closing comments by each candidate for two minutes. In the interim, we'll have questions which are to be, and have been submitted by you on postcards. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes to respond to those questions. We're going to do this a little differently in this respect. Whoever, and we'll rotate this, but whoever starts on a question that comes from the audience will be given a 30-second time to say something after he or she is completed. That is to say, if we start with Dennis Troy and we go through, he'll have an opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal for the things that came after. That way, everybody has kind of an ability to respond to comments from the others. And then, of course, we'll work from Allen and then, and that way. So, two minutes. We will have rebuttals of certain things, but not often of 30 seconds if it's really hot or someone decides they need to say something more. But we're going to try to keep it down because this is a relatively short period of time to get a lot of information out to you about the candidates' positions, and we don't want to waste time with lots of back and forth. So I'm asking the candidates to follow the rules as well. I think that pretty much covers it. Let me introduce the candidates. From my left, Heather Hurley, who's running for council seat. You can applaud. And Tom Divney, current councilman, who I love. Alan Riff, former deputy supervisor. And current councilman Dennis Troy, to my far right. Okay. Oh, by the way, just, I know you know this, but, you know, personal questions like, why do you tie your left foot before your right? You know, we're not going to get into that. Or, you know, every here push polls where they go, if you knew this person tied his left shoe before his right shoe, would you? Stuff like that, we're not going to cover. We're going to cover topics that are germane to Orange Town. So for those of us who are thinking about who's going to tie what shoe, let that one drop. Okay, first question I will ask, and I think it's, it covers a couple of different areas. With an inflation rate of about 2% per year overall, and the increase in costs and services that all local governments have, many in local government find it very difficult to keep under the tax cap imposed by New York State, particularly when you think about costs associated with law enforcement, which are the highest, a lot of costs that go to compensation for your employees and what have you. So I want to ask each of the question, each of the candidates, starting with Dennis on the right, this question, exactly how will you change the budget or cut the budget over the years to account for increasing costs while maintaining the tax cap? What's the matter? Oh, that's right. I want to do the question, though. It was such a good question.
Gives us more time to think.
So, Michael, thank you. So I'm going to resign now, and you guys can do. So I'm going to start on my left, and we're going to ask for the two-minute opening statements. And Kate's going to keep you on target. There's a two-minute sign up there, which you can look to, candidates, to determine when you're about to go over. So let's start with Heather Hurley. Open the statement.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. First, I'd like to just extend condolences to County Executive Day on the loss of his mother, and as well to Supervisor Candidate Chris Day. I'm Heather Hurley. I was born and raised on Long Island. I'm the daughter of a law enforcement retired lieutenant and a CSEA member. I've lived in Pearl River for eight years, and I've been a community advocate for the last three years in Orange Town. I'm proud to say that I'm the co-founder of a couple of grassroots groups, one being Clean Air for Orange Town, the other one being Stop Aneltec. And I'm proud to have defeated the expansion of an experimental chemical plant manufacturing carcinogens in a residential area. I'm a small business owner, the mother of a teenager. I volunteered in the Pearl River School District for many years now as PTA event chairperson on many committees and class parent, Girl Scouts. I've been consistently speaking on behalf of the residents at town board meetings since 2014, when the Aneltec application came before the land use boards and on other agenda items within the town. I've attended countywide panels, such as the Shared Services Panel, panels on New Planet Energy in Stony Point. I've presented in front of the Rockland County Legislature, including the Rockland County Planning and Public Works Commission, when the Aneltec issue was happening. I'm a former casting director for award-winning films that appeared in the Sundance Film Festival and the Tribeca Film Festival. I've also worked on television shows such as Law &amp; Order, and I've been an event designer and manager for projects as large as the Super Bowl, when it was here in 2014. I have experience in contract negotiations with union members and working with RFPs. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Tom Divney.
Tom Divney.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. Tom Divney. I'm a 45-year-old resident of Pearl River. I've lived here my entire life. My wife grew up down the street from me. My kids, I have two of them, they go to Franklin Avenue School. I'm a small business owner, an attorney in Pearl River. I've been practicing there for the last eight years. I've represented many of the people that have bought houses and sold houses in this town. I do trust wills and general litigation. Like most people up here, you run because you think you can offer something. When I ran, we had the problem of taxes were going up and we had no real development of RPC. And I, like most people up here, think you can do better and make a difference. And we've been here eight years with Dennis, who's running with me, and we've done a lot. We've seen the tax cap stayed under that for seven straight years, and that's a pretty good accomplishment. The first time we had the tax cap implemented, we were going to go in with a 9% increase. I told Dennis, I think we can get under this, we can get under the 2%. I cut $1,500 and $1/2 dollars out of the budget and got us under that cap. The next year, I did similar to that, and we got under the cap again. We brought businesses, Bloomberg, New York City Football Club, who I lobbied for three and a half years, to come here. We just completed the Chase Project. And we also have 15, 47 critical systems. And Orange Town has become a data center, a place to go. And we've also, while I've been on the board, I've been working hard to preserve Orange Town. We have to deal with Ramapo, we have to deal with unfettered growth in Ramapo. And you need someone that is going to stand up to Ramapo, preserve and protect Orange Town, and make sure that this town is the great town that we all know and want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Alan Riff.
Thank you for coming out this evening. I think it really says something about our community when so many people came, come out, and people are also working, watching at home. I'm a lifelong resident of Orange Town, and I really was blessed to have a wonderful childhood here. I attended Tappan Grammar School when William O'Sheafer was the principal and not the name of a building on Lester Drive. I attended Albertus Magnus High School and graduated from Fordham University with advanced degrees from Fairfield University and the University of Delaware. In my early career, I was drawn into human and social services. I served as a director of human services in Bergen County. I developed a model program in crisis intervention that became a state model and networked with all of the police departments in Bergen County. For that, I received a special recognition award from the United States Justice Department. I was later appointed to the New Jersey Supreme Court for Youth Commission. Like some people in our lives, we choose to change, and I did. And I was directed into real estate and eventually became a corporate executive in real estate for the A&P, Walbomb, Pathmark Network of supermarkets. When I retired, and I'm 71 years old now, and I'm proud of that because I have a lot to offer, and I'm not going to try to hide my age like many politicians do. When I retired, I became executive, I became Andy Stewart's deputy supervisor. And we've achieved a lot in the last couple of years, actually six years. Tom mentioned about the budget and coming under the cap. We have done it two, six, five years in a row, which is really an amazing thing. What you have to realize is that with the budget, you go over 600 lines. You meet with all of the department heads, and you gradually bring it down. And there are other accomplishments that we have achieved that I'm sure as we get into this, I can mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Dennis Troy.
Hi, I'm Dennis Troy. I'm not hiding my age either, but I'm not giving it to you either.
They put the old guys on this side.
I grew up in the Bronx. I went to Manhattan College. I have a BS in mathematics from Manhattan. Then I started teaching in the Bronx. I taught high school math for nine years. Then I got an MBA from Iona in information systems. I left teaching and I went to AT&amp;T. I was in the IT world in AT&amp;T. I got downsized there, or outsourced over at IBM. So I was there 18 years and went over IBM. I was there about seven-plus years, and again, they got into downsizing there. So then I ended up, in the last 12 years, I was working up in the county as an assistant director of IT in Rockland County. I also have a master's certificate in finance and another master's certificate in project management. I thought by keeping going to school, I was going to stay employed. I just thought I'd stay employed in one place, but I kept bouncing around. For me, I got into politics 22 years ago. I was kind of pushed into it, and the reason I was pushed into it is because people said I could win because I was very active in the community, and it's something that I pride myself in. I was very active in Pearl River Little League for 25 years. I was very active in CYO basketball, coaching, and also refereeing for the last 25 years. I worked in St. Margaret's Parish fundraising bingo, like a lot of people up here, very active in the community. And I ended up going on the legislature for four years. It was a great experience. I learned a lot, you know, during that period of time. And from that, I ended up coming here for the last 18 years as a town councilman. The one thing I would say is with my background and also with all my community service, I'm very accessible. I will listen to people, even those I don't necessarily agree with, and I'm very happy being here, and I would like four more years.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, now to my belated question. With inflation being what it is and costs going up across the board, particularly law enforcement, employee compensation, et cetera, how do you see, envision the future budgets with respect to the tax cap and what needs to be done in those budgets to meet that tax cap? Dennis, you start off.
I've talked about this a lot in terms of Orange Town is a very conservative town compared to other towns in the county. It's a thing where, during my 18 years here, it's the number of employees has basically stayed the same over that period of time. We're very careful about how many employees we have versus making sure that we have the quality of life and the services that people care about here in Orange Town. And the way you do that is you go back to each department, each member of the town board with the supervisor. We sit down each year, go over the budget with each member of the, each member of each department. And through the years, I'll give you an example, Police Department. The Police Department salaries have gone up, but the number of policemen has gone down. It has gone down in my time from a high of 93 down to 83. What we try and do, and the same thing in the Highway Department, the Sewer Department, the Clerk's Office, what you try and do is be very cognizant of what you can afford, all right? But you have to stay actively involved, and that's what town board members do. It's not just meeting here on Tuesday nights. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Just so everybody knows, Kate will give you a signal here because we don't have the stopwatch working, so she'll give you a signal that, that orange says.
It's a minute and a half in this one.
That's right. They don't have a minute and a half.
Two, four minutes. No, we didn't expect.
You're, you're good. Okay, Alan, same question.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's a very good question. Well, you have to realize that in, in town government, 75% of the services are mandated. They're mandated by contract. We also have under contract the medical, the pension. So you really have very little discretionary funds to work with. I think Dennis did a fine job talking about what we can play with and what we can't play with. And yes, we, I wouldn't say we're a conservative town. I think we're a parochial town. We watch our money, and we do meet with department heads during the budgetary process. Myself, Andy, and Jeff Benzick, our finance director, met with each department head through the process, went over 600 lines of where we could cut. And it's not, it's not authoritarian in nature, but it's a give and take between us and the department heads, and in many instances, leaving positions vacant rather than filling them. Because we're cognizant of the fact that we have, that we have this 2% cap, and as I said, we've done it eight, five years in a row where we've come under that. And the department heads are instrumental, even more so than the town board, the deputy supervisor, and the supervisor in reining in costs, because many of them are also residents in this town, and they're conscious of that. And, and that's really all I have to say on it, other than the fact that, I'm doing, for 10 seconds, other than the fact that I would like the opportunity to continue in this role. It's been a productive role. I've enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Tom.
Okay. I mean, the budget process is, is a long and arduous process. You meet with your department heads. I always instruct the department heads, I don't want you just coming in with one budget. You got to come in with 0, 2, and 5%. 0% increase, 2% increase, and 5% increase. So it will show you what the department heads are willing to give up in order to meet these different criteria. And then you have to go through the budget, line item by line item. You got to compare three, four years going back to see where the increases are going up, and ask the questions, well, this was $50,000 in 2015. Now you're asking for $175,000. What's the difference? Why has it gone up so much? And as Dennis mentioned, you know, you have to realize that we operate really lean. As Dennis said, there's 93 officers when he, when I started, now there's 83. We've, we've hired a private contractor to run the golf course. That has saved us a million dollars. We also, I always meet with the, the CSEA and PBA. I negotiate those contracts, and we go back and forth. You know, if you want this, what are you going to give us for that? You know, and it's, it's give and take. I mean, we've been working on the PBA contract for two years now. The CSEA, we've only, we've all, we've been working on about a year. So it's give and take, reviewing the budget, and just knowing that there's always some fluff in that budget, and you got to know where to cut it.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Heather.
Well, not being so entrenched in the budget process as my opponents here, I would just have to say I commend the work that they have done, including Andy Stewart, in presenting budgets that are very conservative, and the work that all of the town council members have done to keep it at that. And, you know, I think we need to look at the Shared Services Initiative that is coming down from the state as well, and how that plays into budgeting for the town. I have attended several of those shared service panels that were held within the county, one at RCC, one at Dominican College recently. And, you know, unfortunately, there were so few members of the public that were there. I was one of them, and so few elected officials that were also not there either. But I think it's our job to attend these panels, to know what's going on at the state level as well, to see how we can trim budgets, how we can share some services without losing our local control over what we have in our town, which is so great, and just make sure that everything is gone over with a fine-tooth comb, and to meet with all the departments, like they've said before me, you know. And I do look forward to being involved in that process should I be elected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Any 30 seconds you want?
I'll give you a quick one. The, one other thing we have to do each year is, and this applies to libraries, applies to the fire departments, and applies to the town, is in terms of what fund balance you have. What is fund balance? Fund balance is taxpayers' money that's put off on the side, all right? And what we've tried to do is make sure we use it judiciously each year. And it's the same thing when we look at the other budgets of other services, because it is taxpayers' money. And so you see anything in the, on the paper about using fund balance? It's not necessarily a bad thing, because we should not be piling up taxpayers' money if we can use it towards the budget.
Hey, thank you. Alan, this question goes to you first. It's the second moderator's question. There is a strong opposition and, I think, deep concern in Orange Town about overdevelopment, and it's raised its head a number of different ways. But there's also a need for ratables. There is need for affordable housing, there's a need for open space. So as a councilman, what, what are your plans with respect to development and planning in Orange Town?
Well, first of all, I think that to address the question, you need a framework. And the framework in this instance is both zoning and the Building Department in terms of enforcement. We just hired a new director in the Building Department, who I'm sure will be extremely competent. She's going to digitize it. We're going to try to give her the resources that she needs in order to make the department far more effective than it currently is. There is a need for enforcement, there's no doubt about it. In terms of the zoning, our zoning is antiquated. It's from the 1950s to 1960s. We don't need a replication of what we had at Aneltec. We don't need a replication of what we had at Hillside. Both of those are tied to proper zoning, buffers, and also, I think, our planning, our, our land use boards. We can't put people on land use boards because they have, they belong to a particular political party, whether it be Democrat or Republican. What we need is people on those boards that have been vetted, that will serve the community, know what they're doing, and in that way, you're going to be able to collectively, with the Building Department, zoning, and codes, and also having the proper people on those boards, address the issues of density. And there are various kinds of density. I think housing density is something that none of us want. We don't want to look like Ramapo, we don't want to look like Clockstown. When it comes to ratables, we have properties out there like IRG that we hope will be sensibly developed. But you got to remember that they're in competition with Monville, which lost Mercedes-Benz and was once the mecca of, of commercial properties in the, oh, sorry, the region.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Tom.
I think that we, as a town board, have to reach out to developers in this town, particularly IRG, and work with them to develop a zone over there that will meet their needs, but also meet the needs of our residents. So we have to engage them, we have to let them know what we find is acceptable, what we won't find is acceptable. I've been in contact with IRG for the last year and a half, discussing what they're going to do over there. Originally, they thought they would have a huge pharmaceutical company come in and take over the 800,000-square-foot building over there. It would have been a really great ratable. It fell through for some reason. We've, I've met with them again to go over concepts, to go over planning, and to let them know, you know, we can't have what we have with Alouf and Hillside, which is, you have two zones that don't go with each other, industrial, commercial, next to residential. These are decisions that were made 50, 60 years ago, and we're dealing with those issues right now because there should have been buffer zones. There should have been maybe commercial off, office park next to industrial and act as a buffer for that residential. So you got to interact with the big companies that live here, and you've got to create a zone that's good for both the community and the developers. Thank you.
Heather. Well, I think one of the things that needs to be done is, I agree, to tightening the, strengthening town code and building the Building Department and really strengthening it to enforce those new town codes. Also, in terms of myself and the advocacy work that I've done with the Stop Aneltec movement, you know, I have been called anti-business. I just want to throw it out there, which is, couldn't be further from the truth, basically. I'm anti-benzene, and I'm anti-noxious odors, which is what Alouf Plastics has been spewing in a residential area and has been affecting residents' lives for years and their quality of life. So I am anti those things. And companies that need to be held accountable should be. Town codes should be enforced. The consequences that come along with enforcing those town codes should be followed through with by the town and not have charges dismissed as they were in May. You know, Mr. Divney just said, you know, he was talking about Hillside and, and Alouf Plastics, but you did forget to mention Aneltec, because that project should not have been here. It was to manufacture benzene, which is a carcinogen, experimentally, which was undocumented and never done before in a residential area, and it had no place in a residential area. I think we need to look at what's coming down from the state, and I've also met with the IDA. We have to look at that as well, the Industrial Development Agency. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather. Dennis?
I believe that Orange Town has always been very conscious about containing overdevelopment here in this town. When I first came on to the Orange Town Board 18 years ago, I advocated for buying the Rockland Psychiatric Center, not because we wanted to get into land use, but to protect the destiny of this town. One of the things that's interesting to me is that when we did the senior housing on Veterans Parkway, when that was done, it was about 125 units, 120-something units on one side. On the other side of the street, there was proposed 100-plus units. The Journal News had an editorial, "Go Slow, Orange Town." You look at the development that is in Orange Town, the number of units, compared to what was going on in Ramapo, Journal News put blinders on, did not look at Ramapo. I believe the Democratic Party also put blinders on in the early part of the millennium in terms of what was going on in Ramapo. The school ended up buying the African Inland Mission. Why did they buy the African Inland Mission? To protect the school district. That's why they did it. And it ended up, it ended up used for administrative purposes. As far as our land use boards, if somebody wants to pick on the land use boards, I said, yeah, I've been involved in probably all the people that are on the land use boards in terms of interviewing them. We do not ask what party. We have opened, we send out open advertising every year for people who want to participate in our land use boards. I recommend all the time at town board meetings. You want to be on the land use board, put in your resume. So I happen to believe what we have set up here can be better, but it's pretty damn good compared to the rest of the county.
Alan, 30 seconds, or?
Sure. The chairman of the Planning Board and the chairman of the ZBA are both Republican, active Republican committeemen, Dennis. As far as recruiting business to come into the town, we have been successful. That's why the Chase database is here. Now, I understand the enthusiasm of the town board over this whole thing and saying they played a very instrumental part in it, but the reality is, it came out of the supervisor's office. Thank you.
Okay, then turning to Tom for the next question. This comes from the audience. What is your vision for the rest of the RPC land?
Well, we have Chase, we have New York City Football Club, and I think that there's offers on the table right now where there's companies out there that want to buy the land and develop it all and, you know, take the golf course, take the golf course, develop the golf course, develop everything, and we only have 25 acres left. That wasn't the vision when we bought that land. It wasn't supposed to be developed. You think Hillside's a mess. RPC will be, it'll be atrocious over there. a mess. RPC will be, it'll be atrocious over there. It'll be knocking down all the trees. You won't have that, that walking trail that was promised by this administration and the supervisor. You'll just have development, and we'll be on our way to, you know, the city of Orange Town. So, my vision is that, you know, we keep a lot of it the way it is. We got rid of the buildings. We can sell some of the lots off to other companies that are compatible to the uses that we want, but I don't see us selling everything to a developer that wants to put up, you know, buildings and whatnot, because we were promised, again, that this would be the next coming of Central Park, and I think that's what we should do.
In terms of the RPC land, I am in support of a passive park recreational use for that lot. There were RFPs put out for designs, and I think that is something that the town should actively pursue, to create a passive park that everyone in Orange Town can use and not just for a special interest group or a sport. The addition of the possibility of a dog park, maybe, or some sort of community center, if, I think that should be explored. I think Orange Town needs that. If there's land that, that can be pursued, I think that's something that we should look into. Someplace that would serve the needs of the senior community and the youth community, where groups could come and meet, and there could be different programs that are offered through the town or through outside companies, maybe that come in and can sponsor some groups, especially for seniors, because I think that's a need that the town is definitely lagging in, and something that has been suffering for years, and I just wish something has been acted upon a little more proactively for that community. We had somebody here at the last town board meeting saying she was 81, and, you know, she wasn't sure if she was going to see a community center in Orange Town. So, I think to actively work towards that goal, I'm just disappointed it hasn't happened in the last eight years. Thank you.
Dennis?
One of the things that's still outstanding in Rockland Psychiatric Center, it's not talked about too often, is the Rockland Children's Psychiatric Center, which is still owned by the state. So, one of the things in terms of what we do with the property with RPC, I still think we need to use some of the land as leverage, whoever who's interested in developing an RPC, that if they're going to buy Rockland's Children's Psychiatric and the state has a good developer, in that case there, we may have to give up Broad Acres in order to, you know, make that deal work, all right? What's important, though, is that with Chase, with the Chase $7.5 million in eliminating the remediation that we would have had to have done on the 60, 60 to 70 buildings that New York State left us with, with lead and asbestos, all right, having that $7.5 million gives us flexibility in terms of what we do with the property. The thing to keep in mind is, out of 348 acres that we bought, 214 acres by the state contract has to be recreation or passive park land. So, that's something that's both a good thing and a bad thing in terms of constraint, in terms of what we can do with this in the future. So, all of that's land out there, and again, it's going to be very important that we have a good town board that makes the decisions on this.
Alan?
Sure. Back in April, when the issue of Lot 1, Lot 1 Borders, the reservoir, came up, I proposed that what we do is we keep that as park land, as a mini Central Park, where we have a walkway along the reservoir. We have a community building, which would be similar to the Butler Building in West Havestra, that could be used for our seniors. It could be used for our youth. When we have major events, because the Masonic Home in Tapan may not always be here for the Fesh or the Italian Festival, we could have them in the center of town. I also proposed at that time a dog walk and as much passive recreation as possible. Unlike Mr. Troy, I am opposed to selling that property to OMM. I think it would be a bad use. I think OMM has done wonderful things in this town, and I credit them for what they've done, but I don't believe that we should give up valuable park land, sell it below market to them, and give up the opportunity to realize a vision for the future. And that's, that's kind of it.
Okay, thank you. Tom, 30 seconds?
Well, community center definitely is on the forefront. We have lands at RPC. Some of them will be sold, and my idea is that we have to earmark proceeds from the sale of any properties at the RPC property to develop a community center, not just a senior center. We need to protect our youth at risk. We need to provide a place for our seniors. We need, we need something for the entire community, and the only way it's going to be done is if we earmark funds from the RPC properties that we sell.
Okay, thank you. This next question from the audience to all of you, and we'll start with Heather. How will you assure clean air, water, aquifer in our town, and what history or expertise do you in particular bring to this area?
Well, the past three, for the past three years, I've learned a lot about chemicals. I'm not a scientist, but I've learned a lot about chemicals, about different new technologies that are on the horizon that may come into Orange Town. With the advocacy that I've led in, for two movements, the Stop Anelatech movement and the Clean Air for Orange Town movement, were both community-based and were, was comprised of individuals, of listening to individuals who were qualified to offer their opinions and their expertise in certain fields. Orange Town is filled with qualified people who are professionals in these areas, and it was very refreshing to be able to learn from them and continue to learn from them and to read up on all the different technologies that are ahead of us. In terms of how to assure that the land, the water and soil will remain clean, well, about a year ago, I had contacted the county executive, because we learned that the position of public health engineer was rescinded from the county when the, certain articles were rescinded from the county sanitary code, and I had asked if he would consider reinstating that position. He declined because he felt it was redundant and that it was being covered by the New York State DEC. So, I approached Andy Stewart, and I said, would you please consider putting this position in the budget? And it's moving ahead now, so.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Dennis?
It's been a hot topic here the last couple of years, and, you know, Heather has been one of the leading advocates on this, and it's a thing, from my perspective, it's not in my wheelhouse, but in terms as a town board member, what I have to do is I have to sit and listen. You listen to the town people who come in. You listen to the experts. I follow all the emails back and forth with the DEC, who's involved with, whether in Anelatech, the, also in Aloof, all right? But the other thing in terms of the town itself, what we did, I believe is very important, we hired Jane Slaven as the new head of the building department. I think she's going to move the building department into the millennium in terms of the technology, and also in terms of management. The other thing here in terms of the town that people take for granted is our sewer system. The town itself put $50 million into our infrastructure over the last eight, well, probably it's more than that now. It's probably up to 60 over the last 18 years. So, that's very, very important. People don't necessarily keep it in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Alan?
First of all, I want to commend my running mate, Heather Hurley, on her work over the last few years. She's been a model in terms of what we would expect an elected official to be, and I'm proud to run with her. One of the, one of the major things we're going to be facing is infrastructure in this town, which impacts on everything, and we can't have an attitude that permeates the town board right now that we don't take state funds because there are strings attached. Well, there are strings attached upfront, and you can know upfront what you are going to be required to do by the state, and if there are strings attached that you don't like, you don't take the money. If we didn't take almost $5 million from the state, we wouldn't have had a $2 million sewer project in Nyack, okay, which corrected the polluting of the Hudson River. We wouldn't have had a new bridge on Oak Tree Road in Tapan. We wouldn't have had sidewalks in Palisades. The reality is that it's important to take state funds, because if we don't take them, somebody else will. And I just don't like the nomenclature attached to why we don't take state funds. There are strings attached, and I don't think that's the way you preserve your town or move forward in your town.
Thank you, Alan. Tom?
Okay. I think everyone up here agrees that the safety of the community comes first. And recently, we've done a lot to make sure that the community is protected. We've hired TRC Consulting to do testing regarding Aloof. Results have come back, and we had a doctor here last week who said that her analysis of the results is that the air is safe around the Aloof factory. I know people don't always agree with the findings, but that's what we have right now. We have changed the penalties that will be assessed to corporate violators. That was drafted by me. So, corporate violators will now be fined a first time of violation $20,000, and it can go up to $60,000 a week. So, we're trying to ensure compliance by making those fines hefty for corporations. We created the position of healthcare engineer to work as a liaison between the land use boards, the building department, the town attorney's office, and the community at large. We did hire Jane Slaven, who's going to run this department, the building department, the best way that she can. We've worked with the DEC to ensure that Aloof complies with the DEC consent order. The DEC consent order said they had to do certain repairs to their factory. They had to improve their ventilation system. They have to do a number of repairs so that the air that's being emitted is safe and it doesn't smell, and hopefully, we'll have that relief in the next week and a half. And that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Tom. Heather, 30 seconds?
I just wanted to say, you know, all of those initiatives and steps that were taken, I do commend the town board, and I do thank you, and they, they were a direct result of the work that groups like Clean Air for Orange Town did initiate and start. So, I do thank you for listening to the, to the community about that. It is also the responsibility, though, of elected officials to disseminate information that's factual based on thorough analysis, that is complete, that it's deemed complete and conclusive. So, there is more work to be done. This Aloof issue is not over, and we do need more air testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Dennis, starting with you. Audience question. Please give your opinion on incorporating Pearl River as a village.
I've been fairly vocal on that. I'm dead-set against incorporating the Village of Pearl River. The reason I believe it is, I think it's detrimental to the town of Orange Town. I believe we're stronger as a town of Orange Town in order to deal with the issues of overdevelopment coming in from Ramapo, and that's what was driving the Village of Pearl River in the first place. I talked about this the other night in another debate. To me, what it does, it, it makes us weaker, and the reason it makes weaker is, when you come into wards and you make it smaller, you make it easier for somebody from the outside to take over. You have the town of Orange Town with a $65 million budget. We have our, we have our own attorneys. We have the town councilman, Tom Divney, who's coming up with laws that, he's had five different laws, and we have another one in the midst that's coming up that deals with the problems of overdevelopment that are being forced, being forced on us from the people in Ramapo. So, it's a thing where I believe Pearl River is part of Orange Town. I live in Pearl River, but I represent all of Orange Town, and I want it to stay that way.
Thank you, Dennis. Alan?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with what Dennis said. I mean, it would be very easy for me to say I live in Tapan, therefore, it's not my issue, but it is a town-wide issue. But I think you also have to look at it from a financial perspective. You know, you say that it's not going to cost anything. Well, you know, it can start out as a voluntary service, but eventually, people are going to maybe want to be paid for their time. The other thing is that under the village plan, you only have the highway department for a year and a half. After that, that becomes your cost. Who's going to pay for the St. Patrick's Day parade? Not the town, the village. That's something to think about. So, I look at this from a perspective of, of really monetary, more than anything else. I don't want to get into the fear-mongering. Yes, there is, there is a problem with overdevelopment coming over our borders. We don't like it, but it's about overdevelopment. It's about density. It's not about ethnicity, and to make it ethnicity, that is what's going to destroy our town. We don't need it as a people. We're a great community, and we have to remain that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Tom?
Not a big fan of the Village of Pearl River. The, the numbers they put out there, what it would cost, I don't think are accurate. I believe there is a safety in numbers. Harder to take over a town when you have less people in it. And I think how you, how you deal with issues such as overdevelopment in Ramapo and, you know, concerns about preserving and protecting Orange Town is, you've got to pass laws and regulate the town so that it, it keeps us united. So, we've done the landlord registry to make sure that absentee landlords can't take advantage of our residents. We've done the no-knock registry so that realtors can't harass our citizens. We've passed laws to increase the bulk requirements for religious institutions, churches, and schools, requiring three acres of land to put any of these in a residential zone. We have rejected only community block grants, which have the requirement of further rents of fair housing, which is a string that you don't want in your community, because then they can zone, the federal government can zone your, your municipality any way they want. We've had the entity disclosure law passed. If you're a corporation and you're going to do the business with Orange Town, we want to know who you are. So, those are the laws we passed, and we've also increased fines for corporate violators.
Thank you, Tom. Heather?
Well, in terms of the village concept, in theory, I understand where the board was coming from, because I had met with them and I had conversations as to why they wanted to create this, and not only because of overdevelopment issues, but because they felt that they weren't being heard, their voices weren't being heard by the land use boards primarily, as to what was going on most recently, and prime example being Anelatech. So, you had a land use board that was the lead agency, a planning board, and they were presented with information where the applicant was actually lying about certain things on their application, and five out of seven of your land use board members vote to approve that. One of them, who didn't even know that they were producing benzene, that they were, thought that they were making wood pellets. So, that's an issue, and when that's happening in Pearl River, the residents of Pearl River want to be represented, and the frustration that came out of that project and the whole process, no wonder Pearl River wanted, that being one reason why Pearl River wanted to take control and have their own land use boards. And I actually do, I mean, I, I understand that completely, and the issue of taxes is a huge issue, and that's why I think there was a lot of concern over that. But now, I think, talking to the board members of their committee and understanding what they're, what they also are looking for, I think that they also see that there's hope in, in a change of government as well, who do appoint those land use board members. So, going forward, you know, I think that they see some positive change there.
Dennis, 30 seconds?
The Village of Pearl River got a lot of coverage in the, in the our town. I don't know if the Journal News covered it, but it really didn't have the traction for the amount of coverage that it was getting. It did have a lot, you know, what it did positive, it did get a lot of discussion going, you know, from the various residents of Pearl River, but again, I think most of the people saw the error in the ways of going to a village. It's not the way to go.
Okay, thank you. Kate, how are we doing on time? One more question, and then we do, we're at...
I think we'll wrap up, so one more question.
One more question. Okay, this is, we'll do this a little differently, slightly differently. This is a question that's posed to the challengers, but the incumbents will have a chance to respond as well. The question comes from the audience, and it says, what would you have done differently than the sitting town board members? We'll start with Alan.
I guess you have to, you have to pick your, your topic here. I, I, I think it really has to do with an attitude, an attitude of obstruction, and I think we saw that with the, with the golf courses. When we tried to move towards private management at Broad Acres and Blue Hill, Mr. Divney and Mr. Troy were opposed to that. In fact, on Broad Acres, Mr. Divney accused our finance director of fudging the budget, which was unacceptable. Eventually, the numbers did not prove wrong, and they went along with this. Mr. Divney did vote against Broad Acres, but both him and, and Mr. Troy did sup- Mr. Divney did vote against Broad Acres, but both him and Mr. Troy did support Blue Hill. So it really is an attitude that pervades the board. I think we saw the same attitude with the LED, not the LED lighting with, yeah, with the LED lighting, where myself, Jerry Bittari, and Andy went to White Plains to look at the lighting, and Mr. Divney did not come because he said that when you buy a police car, you don't have to ride in it. I think we owe it to you, the public, to explain to you why we're looking at something and in what way we're, we're moving. So, I mean, in terms of doing anything different, I think that I would do it in terms of who, my attitude, but also in terms of who we appoint to the various boards. As Heather pointed out, they have to be informed, they have to be involved, and they represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Tom? You can respond to it or talk about how, what you were happy with.
All right. As far as Broad Acres, the reason I oppose it because the books weren't there. They, they didn't have the right numbers. They were taking fees from Blue Hill and putting them onto the Broad Acres budget. So you had people that were working at Blue Hill, and their salaries were counting against Broad Acres. And the numbers that were promised were never delivered. It did save some money, but didn't save nearly as much money as it said it would. And the other thing is, you had inter-fund transfers that didn't go away that they said was a savings. The inter-fund transfers, they divide up what we have to pay for services, and they give it to each department. Those did not go away, so they were not a savings. So, you can't just put out these numbers and say that it's a savings. As far as the golf course at Blue Hill, we did work, Dennis and I, to get that done. We sat down with the CSCEA to negotiate that, to make sure that, even though we were getting rid of the, the golf course being managed by the town, that the workers weren't let go. And we, there were complicated negotiations that we had to do. As far as what I'm proud of, Dennis and I, when I got on the board, negotiated with O&R to bring more power to the town of Orange Town. O&R needed to do that to keep Verizon here. After we did that, we did a land swap to be able to do it. More power came, Bloomberg came, 1547 Critical Systems came, and Chase is here because of that.
Thank you, Tom. Heather? Heather?
I guess one of the things that I would do differently or challenge would be, again, the land use appointments. Also, some of the other issues would be, the incumbents have favored allowing presentations to happen during workshops, which I did oppose at the time. And presentations that were not on agendas, that on, specifically on a night that there was a school board election, and they voted in favor of that, and I don't think that was fair to the public. Also, jumping to make amendments to town codes for certain individuals that may appear before them, when they've let amendments to the town code which would ban the manufacturing of certain carcinogens like benzene go neglected and leave the town of Orange Town vulnerable to companies coming in for the last two years, coming into Orange Town and potentially wanting to do the same thing. I think an amendment to the town code can be done, that can quantify and distinguish, determine research and development versus manufacturing, because that was a big issue that was happening with Enelitec. It's not going to be the last time either that this happens. And I think that the fact that that has fallen off an agenda because you're, they were using Enelitec as the issue when Enelitec had already been approved, and it would not have had any bearing on them, I think that was a shame.
Dennis?
I wouldn't use the word obstruction, for one thing. You know, it's a thing where, just because you have a difference in opinion with the person who's the supervisor, doesn't mean you're obstructing. It's a thing where we try to work together as a team, and it is a team where there is give and take. The one other thing in terms, I agree wholeheartedly with Tom, in terms of what we did with both Broad Acres and with the, with the Blue Hill, it was a lot of give and take back and forth. It was initially proposed, but there were other components that really had to be looked at, and we did look at those. And we eventually went along with that. That is not obstruction, alright? The other thing in terms of our land use boards, land use boards keep coming up and have said this all along the line, we advertise every year, supervisors advertise every year in terms of getting people to participate in our land use boards. I'll tell you this, though, if you do participate, you better be, have thick skin, because there are people in this town will demonize you, and again, if they disagree with what your opinion is. And it's a thing where, a lot of times, we went through this with Enelitec particularly, where all of our lawyers were telling us what we had to do, and surprisingly enough, the supervisor went against what the lawyers were telling them to do, and that might have played to the crowd, but was not necessarily a good thing for the town. I don't believe it was a good thing for the town.
Alan, 30 seconds?
Sure. We all support Homes for Heroes, and we also know that Mr. Divney and Mr. Troy are opposed to HUD grants. Well, on May 23rd, they passed, there was a public hearing, and they changed the zoning in Tapan from R-15 to permit multifamily housing at the Homes for Heroes. It's necessary. It's for families, it's for people over 50 and the youth over 18 years old. The point I'm trying to make is you can't say, "We're opposed to HUD," but at the same time, we're going to facilitate the use of HUD monies in Homes for Heroes.
Okay, we are at closing statements. We'll do it in the reverse order, with Dennis Troy going first. Two minutes.
Again, it's been my honor to be on the town board here for the last 18 years, and there's been a lot of exciting things that I've worked on over the last 18 years. I'm proud of my participation. We put in a lot of time here on the board. In terms of Rockland Psychiatric Center, that didn't happen by accident. We had to work that out in terms of what we had to do with the state. The next thing we did, we looked at nine developers coming in. We ended up choosing, as a board, Hovnanian, alright, which I thought was the best out of the nine proposals. And then the economy went south, and so did that particular proposal. Then we still, then I had to look at Rockland Psychiatric Center and what else we had to do. Now, besides that, I've also been involved in Substance Abuse Committee, I'm involved with senior citizens. I know one of the things, I'm always, somebody put out on Facebook that all I talk about is my grandkids and OMM, alright? It's a thing where, in this town, I have three married children with seven grandchildren. One, one of my sons lives in Pearl River, one lives in Tapan, and my daughter lives in Upper Grandview. They're in three, the seven grandchildren will be in three different school districts. I am here for the duration. I'm not heading south, I'm not going to North Carolina, I'm not going to Florida. I want to keep this a great town. Kate's saying she's unhappy, I'm not going. No, they, this, this town, and I've talked about this a lot, this town is an oasis. I've refereed basketball for 25 years, 25-plus years. I've gone all over the county, all over. Also, when I was on the county legislature, I wanted to find out what was going on in the county. I'm very aware of what goes on in the county. This is a great town. Does it have some flaws? Is there a problem, say, with Enelitec or Alouf or whatever else? The hot button of the day is, look at the big picture. This is a great town, and it's not by accident.
Alan, closing, closing remarks?
It's been a privilege over the last six years to serve as Andy Stewart's deputy supervisor. We've been able to accomplish a lot. What I brought to the table was 40 years of experience in this town. I served as Republican chairman early in my career. I also sat here in this very seat where I'm sitting tonight, as an Orange Town Councilman. In 1990, I probably cast the most important vote of my tenure. At that time, the town of Orange Town was burning Rockland County's industrial sludge, and it really became an issue of profit over public health. I had a lot of pressure from my Republican counterparts, my colleagues, all of whom I loved and liked a lot, but they wanted me to vote with them. I said, "No, I cast the deciding vote." That's the kind of person I am. I'm very independent, and I've been criticized for that. I'm probably the only person here that has actually served, or actually been influential in terms of the Republican Party and now the Democratic Party. I also stood with Heather Hurley in front of ShopRite in Pearl River in the hot weeks of August, getting signatures for the Orange Town First party. And the reason for that is, people should feel independent. They shouldn't feel they should be forced to vote Republican or Democrat. They should be allowed to really vote their choices. As far as Dennis has said about the town, I'm proud of this town. I grew up in this town. I've decided to stay in this town. And I think that, you know, we have a commitment to the future. I believe in stewardship. I pay high school taxes, like everybody in this room, but I don't object to it because somebody educated me. And maybe the $600 a year they were paying back in the 1950s was like the $5,000 today. So in stewardship, I believe in going forward, protecting our youth, taking what's good about this town and passing it on to them. And perhaps President Kennedy said it best, when he said, "We all inhabit a small planet, we all breathe the same air, we all cherish the future for our children, and essentially, we are all mortal." Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Alan. Tom Divney?
I think that everyone serves a purpose on the town board, and I believe the purpose that I've served for the last, close to eight years, is that I'm a worker bee. And the R-Town, in my endorsement, said that Tom Divney puts in more time than any other councilman in recent history. I've drafted many laws and volunteered a lot of my legal services at no expense to this town. I've drafted the park fees for non-residence law. I've drafted the landlord registry law, the lot size and parking requirements law, the entity disclosure law. I've drafted a law that increased fines and penalties for corporate violators of town code. I've done this all on my own time, and I draft it, and I send it to the town attorneys, and they look at it, and they tell me what they want to change, but I do it because I believe these laws that I've drafted and we've passed unanimously on this board is to protect the town. Because at the end of the day, the number one thing that's going to affect this town is overdevelopment in Ramapo. And because of that, I voted against, in a resolution that was sent to Suez Water, the D cell plant. I did that because my concern was Ramapo. They were increasing that we needed more water to deal with what's going on in Ramapo. That's why they wanted to do the D cell plant. At the end of the day, you're going to need someone that is strong enough to stand up to the overdevelopment, and I think I am. We have another law that we're going to look at come December 11th, and it's going to deal with regulating easements and E roofs. And that was done at my behest. We hired outside counsel to advise us on the history of regulation of these devices and to give us legislative findings and to advise us on how to do it and how to do it correctly. I think outside the box, I do what I do because I want to protect and preserve this town. And I think that I've earned another four years, and I hope you come out and you vote for Tom Divney on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Heather Hurley?
Well, I would appreciate your support on November 7th. I saw a need in this town, and I responded to it. And I've been fighting for the community for the last three years, and I will continue to do so should I be elected to the town board. My experience brings a different perspective to town government because of my passion to serve the public and to bring community involvement into town, I think is really important. Through my advocacy, I've organized hundreds of people to become involved in town government and at least to watch town board meetings, to come to community meetings, to learn about the issues, and that's really important going forward. I want to bring town government, make them, make it accountable and make it more transparent than it already is. You know, I feel like I know what I'm, what is going on at the state level and in other towns, and we need to know that. We need to be aware of what's happening at those different levels, so, because it may impact what's happening in Orange Town. And I feel that I have a good handle on those issues. I feel that it's our responsibility to the residents and to our environment to move Orange Town in the right direction, and I feel that I'm the best candidate to do that. So on November 7th, please vote Heather Hurley. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, how about an applause for all the candidates tonight? We're going to take a three and a half minute break, and we're going to bring the supervisor candidates up. Three and a half.